The time is now five minutes after five and we'll call this meeting of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board to order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection. And Mr. Martin, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I do have one other thing for recognition, but I'll give it to Mr. Martin first. So let me begin this meeting with a recognition of a person who for many, many, many years has been an important part of the VIA family, a person who has volunteered many hours of his life, who served on multiple committees and for the last several years has shared this dais as one of our most prominent members of the board. Bill Martin is one of those people that history will record has changed the face of public transportation in San Antonio. He is getting ready to leave our Board of Trustees as are a few of us. We're going with you, Bill, but we are going to miss you. You are more than just our colleague, you are a friend, and I know that this volunteer job doesn't bring with it very much recognition, but this evening we want to tell you just how much we value you, both as a friend and as a member of this body. And much of the progress that we've made, the preservation of our core services, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish without you, and we want you to know that. So, thank you, Bill. And I think you have to step up here because we're going to give you this very expensive plaque.
I just need to let Mr. Martin's family know that although you're taking him to Oklahoma for now, that in 2017, when we opened our modern streetcar line, he is the only person at VIA who has actual operating experience, and so we have preserved that, and we will expect you to be here on opening day.
You can ring the bell.
Yes. This is William A. Martin for his dedicated service to the citizens of Bear County as a member of the VIA Board of Trustees, January 2009 through December 2013.
Thank you very much. As Ted, I've been connected with VIA for many years and this family, you know. I'm going to thank you all.
Just for you to know, we're not going to bore you with this because we just had a nice private moment with Bill upstairs, but we wanted him to have this public recognition. And while he's leaving the boardroom, let us also recognize his family in particular, Mrs. Martin, who has shared Bill with us for many, many years.
Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, Mr. Martin, I'd just like to take a moment to also recognize staff. As all of you know, the week of Thanksgiving, we implemented a new Fairbox system, and Fairbox systems are touched by every passenger in the system. So they make you very vulnerable if there's a problem with them. A lot of customers have issues, and so we put a large amount of effort into making sure that they work properly, that our operators knew how to use them, that our passengers knew how to use them. And I'm happy to report, we had a very, very successful launch. We had, for example, brought in extra staff to cover the telephone lines, and I think they said we averaged a couple phone calls a day related to Fairbox. So it's always nice to be prepared and yet not need in the end. And what I wanted to do this evening is just recognize some of the key players, and again, whenever you recognize individuals, they're just really representing a large team of people. So if you would stand, as I call you out, Steve Lange, who was the project manager, VP, CFO, Gary Glasgow with maintenance, who made sure everything got installed and worked properly, Alva Carrasco, operations, Vice President of Transportation, thank you. Alva, Tramell Brown, Tramell did a tremendous job with the training all the way around Judy Cooper in finance, who had to work around the system as we implemented it in phases. Steve Serna in marketing made sure our customers knew what was coming at them, and Tracy Manning in planning. Thank you all and all your team for everything you did.
If I could make a comment, and I'd like Dr. Hanin to join me in this sentiment of, you know, this project, because we served on the selection committee for consultants in this project was huge, and is still huge, I understand, and y'all did a phenomenal job of getting it where it needs to be in this point in time. And I, you know, I think y'all did a great, great show of teamwork, and congratulations.
I just, I do merit this. Absolutely. Thank you so much for all that you've done to bring this system online and do it seamlessly. Well, this is my...
That brings us to item number three. I'm going to assume you don't have any further report, Jeff?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number four, citizens to be heard.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven citizens to be heard tonight. As your name is called, you are welcome to come to the front to make a comment. If you'd like to speak from where you sit, please raise your hand to the microphone. We'll be recording. Bill Burman.
Hello, I'm Bill Burman. I'm the Economic Development Chair for the NAACP. Many times when you hear rumors, you try to verify the rumor, or you come to see whether the rumor is true or false, or you just come to get on record. So I'm basically here to just come to get on record. One of the things that I would ask the board to do as you deliberate and make your decisions about the first phases of the project is to, let's make sure that we stay with our original sales pitch, and let's make sure that we stay with our original promises. There were individuals, including Keith Parker, when this thing originally got started, who came to visit our organization, and I can remember 99% of the questions at the Barbara Jordan Center that night to Mr. Parker was on the east-west route, or the east-west starter route. And so the east-west starter route is very, very important to a lot of people. We're not saying that the north-south route is not important, we're just simply saying that the east-west route, we believe, is just as important. And so as you begin to look at staff options and alternatives, we would simply suggest that we always keep in mind of our original sales pitch to the communities, and our original sales pitches at the meetings that we've had, and that is that the starter route would basically have a north-south part of it, but it would also have an east-west part. And so as we continue to deliberate, as we continue to define the first phases, let's make sure that all of this is completed. We support the entire project. We support this project, but we want you to know that we support the entire project, both the north-south and the east-west. Thank you very much.
Gary Houston.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Gary Houston. I am a member of Mr. Burman's Economic Development Committee for the NAACP. I have taught urban and environmental issues at the Department of Political Science and Geography at UTSA, as Professor Gambetta is well aware, and as Congressman Gonzalez is as well. 14 years ago, VIA had a first-rate plan for light rail in San Antonio, and unfortunately, it was voted down by the citizens of San Antonio. Were that still in place, we would probably be rivaling Dallas for being one of the outstanding light rail systems in the country altogether. Unfortunately, the citizens didn't see fit to vote for that plan. I'm afraid that the north-south plan alone is not enough of a remnant or a reflection of that plan to really represent a first-rate effort for us locally. An east-west plan would not only link to St. Paul Square, it would link to the Alamo Dome, Amtrak, St. Phillips College, and ultimately to the AT&amp;T Center, which is an effective way of responding to the needs of the community more broadly than just the north-south plan would do, and it's more in keeping with what that original plan in '99 or so was all about. My concern is, in fact, that the north-south plan would be such a meager presentation if it were to stand alone, that it would probably be consistent with the Brackenridge Eagle or a river barge as far as meeting the overall needs of the mass portion of the community locally. We want to make a stronger statement than river barges or the Brackenridge Eagle by connecting that north-south route to one that would be more effectively used by the public here in San Antonio. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Lauren Zerutucci.
Yes, my name is Lauren Zerutucci, 3943. A friend asked me to ask VIA, she lives on a street called Peppervine, and, which is the 616 route, and she wants to know why she can't get VIA Trans weekend service, and that's just VIA Trans. And my question is, when is the, the technology seems to be constantly broken? Yesterday morning, I didn't get a call that the van was on the way to pick me up, and when I tried to make a reservation for the 23rd, I got the reservation, but when I made a return trip, it said, it kept saying, "You have chosen a time outside of the time parameter. Please try again." And no matter what time I picked, it kept saying, "You have chosen a time that is outside the time parameter." So I finally gave up and spoke with a live agent, and I got the time that I wanted on my return trip for the 23rd. Thank you.
Arthur Backwoods.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Backwoods. I apologize for not having the front drive, but I would like to present these photos of a human skeleton because a few months ago, I was shot in the face on a VIA bus. It may not look like it, but one reason is because I had to take charge of my medical treatment. I'm not saying anything bad about the medical services in San Antonio, but I had to take control. My lips were like ninety degrees by the face. I've been instrumentally trying to realign my lips so that I can talk to you and articulate the vowels and the virgins to communicate to you. I still have a lot of problems where I have to, I don't have the gums from here to the back because my teeth have been, my gums are gone and my teeth are missing, and I have to cook my food and parade it so that I can eat. But the reason I'm here is because of the process that I submitted an application. Unlike Laurie, I'm not handicapped like she is and other individuals that sit here at the front, and they're not handicapped as far as I'm concerned. They're an asset to society for others to be down on. But why I'm here is, I submitted an application for a van because of the fact that I live outside of the city limits, and today I had to walk, and I had to advocate a surgery on my ankle because I have a cyst, and no one believes me. If you see this big lung, it's a cyst that needs to be pulled out, and I missed an appointment because I didn't have the transportation I'd need. I missed several appointments already for my medical well-being, and the delay is, they're saying they're passing it on to someone else. Well, I wish they wouldn't pass it on because when I had knee surgery, I already was in the system, and all I'm asking is to look at that application so that I can get my VIA pass. Thank you.
Robert Shively.
How you doing, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Robert Shively, and this is my first time coming here. I am totally blind. I ride VIA Trans. I have been trying for over eight years to get the door-to-door service, eight years. They say you can't see the van from my door. Well, the operator cannot see the van when he goes to the bathroom either, or when he gets a cup of coffee at dialysis. So that's not an excuse. I'd like to know why y'all went to $1.95 and not $2.00. That makes no sense at all. Where's the logic? We don't carry that kind of change on us all the time. At least, I don't. Where's the nipple going?
He is...
Where?
He is pocketing, ripping y'all off.
Oh, man. That's not what I wanted to hear. I understand we don't get responses tonight, so I'm hoping somebody's taking really good notice. I go to San Antonio College. They sell bus tickets there. Why don't they sell VIA Trans tickets? Why don't they sell VIA Trans tickets at HEB with the bus passes? These are things that blows my mind. I'm an educated man. I know I don't sound like it. That's because I'm from South Carolina. Y'all have to forgive me. But these are answers I'd like to get filled out, maybe know something, please. Thank you.
Sherri Shively.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Shively. I'm Robert's wife. There are a couple of things that I'd like, first of all, I would like to thank Sylvia Castillo, because we have had some really, over the last two weeks, some really bad VIA Trans rides, where we're taken from San Antonio College to Fort San Houston to Converse, and then back over to our place, which is at Worsbach and Blanco. We traveled for two hours on VIA Trans and went home. We got, at 11:36 at night, we finally got home. At 11:36 at night, we get home, and my husband has to get around, get to bed. We have to re-figure his medicine because he's supposed to take it at nine. We have to re-figure what he can take and can't take so it won't conflict with morning meds, and then in the morning, we have to figure out what he can take before he goes to dialysis at 5:50 in the morning, which is his next pickup. Not a whole lot of sleep time there. Sylvia was able to look at the situation and try to work with us and get things fixed, and she did. She's done a really terrific job, and I really want to thank her. We just, we had a whole week like that where it was all bad things, and it was just a really bad thing. But some of the other things that we looked at is what kind of, you know, we have to be ready for your ride 10 minutes before our scheduled time. So when you show up an hour late to pick him up, that makes a difference. It makes a big difference. But VIA has, there's no repercussion. You know, there's nothing that happens to VIA. If we're late, you know, you get a black mark and you get in trouble. There's got to be, there's got to be a common something somewhere. There's got to be a way to have the client be taken care of in a timely manner, and sometimes that's just not happening. When you get a dialysis person to dialysis an hour late, it means they lose an hour of time off the machine, which affects their health. Not a good thing, and something needs to be looked at for that, too. If you get somebody there late to a dialysis appointment, all I'm always told is, "We don't make any difference." You know, "Does it make a difference if they're a dialysis patient or if they're just a regular client going to the mall?" There is a difference. There's a medical difference that can affect their health, and something really should look at that. Thank you.
Gay Sylvia. Sharon Scott.
Well, he'll come to hit me with it. They are right. VIA, y'all are ripping off the people. My brother take VIA Trans. It was another lady. She's on Dallas. It's twice a week, and they pay, I think, $2.00 so that other dollar don't go to them. If they are short .25 or .50, y'all have cards where y'all can give them money back, the change card. They've been having it for years. The bus drivers never get the change card to give them their money back. A man put $3. 00 the other day. The bus fell, it was $1.35 with the transfer. That other money went to VIA. VIA, you are ripping people off, and you ought to be ashamed of yourself. Now, let me back up a little bit. When y'all went up there, y'all didn't have road call. I told Bonnie Elder and Frank Ozsner that y'all have to have road call. We don't know who's missing. I go to meetings all the time. They always have road call. The city council has road call. Judge Wolf of Commissioner's Court is just five of them, and he said, "One person pressed and let the secretary record that Mr. So-and-so is not here. He might come later then. We're changing." Y'all in violation of the state law? Y'all in violation of the city law? And Frank, no. Frank was the city attorney for at least about 25 years before he retired, then he came over here. So Frank, you can't tell me you don't know that they're supposed to have road call. If anybody knows, you know Frank, and you need to get it together. Okay? Maybe Bonnie don't know. I don't know. I went to government 1970 when I was over at Edison High School. That's the first thing they talk about is road call. Now, about to run out of time, and Mr. Ozner, I'm going to start writing you letters. They send me crazy letters, and they don't make no sense at all. Now, we talked about road call. The ID, I had, lost my package, went over there, and the guy asked me for my ID. Then he going to write it, type it in the computer. He can't do that. He's not a policeman. He can't do it. Period. 606 route, people are standing in the dark because there's not a bus stop. They told me to call 311. These are your passengers. We get here sometime at 4:00, and they won't let us into 5:30. That's wrong. Y'all have security, cameras. Leon Valley, it's a bad dip on Hibner and Banderas. I talked to Mr. Gonzalez about it. Y'all need to get with Leon Valley to do that. Elvis Road, there's not no streetlights. Banderas, there's not no streetlights, and people are standing in the dark. One more thing. The transfers are real good. I rode the bus. I forgot to take my big pass the other day. I went to the west side and come back, and I got a transfer, so that's doing good. All y'all green bus shelters, they don't have no lights working. They haven't had no lights working in a long time. And we don't know who the new board members are. We don't know who didn't come in today. So if y'all keep on in violation of the law, I'm going to write to Attorney General and come down here and tell him to slap y'all hand 10 times. Have a nice day. Oh, Happy New Year, and have a Merry New Christmas. Now...
There are no more citizens to be heard.
Y'all can't go around ripping people off. I don't understand that.
Item number five, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Miller and a second by Mr. Allison. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item number six. The time is now 5:33, and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this executive session are as follows. Item number six, entitled Modern Streetcar Update, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. And item number 12, entitled Director of Audit/Performance Evaluation, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney, and Section 551.074, entitled Personnel Matters. Item 13A, entitled Legal Briefing, Briefing Regarding Financing Obligations, Legal Issues, Options, and Next Steps Related to the 2013 ATD Bond Issuance, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. And item 13B, entitled Legal Briefing, Vehicle Maintenance Facility Briefing, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney, and Section 551.072, entitled Real Property. All persons who are to attend this executive session, please proceed to the conference room. The time is now 6:17, and we are officially coming out of a closed executive session regarding agenda items 6, 12, 13A, and 13B. No deliberations, public policy, or vote-taking occurring during the executive committee. Item number six, Mr. Buchanan, Modern Streetcar Update.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Joining me this evening is Jeff Booth. Jeff Booth is helping us out with our federal initiatives as we move forward with any of the streetcar, the Smart Move programs with the federal government, and we'll be talking to you a little bit about phasing here at the beginning, and then Jeff will kind of give you a conversation on kind of the federal landscape and some of the options available to us as we move forward. So this evening, I wanted to discuss with you, as coming out of the committee meetings last week, some options available to us on the phasing of the streetcar program here in San Antonio. As you might remember, back in September, we adopted a locally preferred alternative, and staff was directed to continue to clear environmentally the whole entire 5.9 miles. That is what we continue to do, but we did realize that we would probably have to have a discussion about phasing and implementation, and that is why we're here with you this evening. So staff has been asked to identify a starter phase that supports the current near-term and long-term development plans in and around the downtown San Antonio. and long-term development plans in and around the downtown San Antonio area. And also look at a ridership profile that also helps us generate new transit markets and new ridership associated with the streetcar. So let's continue to do, be a great bus, bus company and move people with our rubber tired fleet, but let's also look for new riders and new ridership markets associated with the streetcar. And most importantly, probably, is that it could be built with the current local funding. So if no additional dollars were available to us as part of the program, what could we implement with the dollars, the $210 million that has been implemented and, and programmed for the series of projects today? So those were our objectives as I move forward with the options this evening. There are a couple of basic outcomes of the seven options or so I'm gonna show you this evening. To maintain the reserves on the projects in case anything comes up as we move forward, and possibly also to match any other federal grants should, should there be extra money available to us. We wanted to estimate the project cost to need to be in and around $185 million. So we've kind of used that as our, kind of our upper limit as we move forward with the options. I'll show you here in a couple of minutes. We felt that it was comfortable, a project that we felt we could fund with the $210 million we had available. Building the Broadway Corridor eliminates one of the multimodal centers. So if you build the Broadway Corridor and into South Town or into the south part of downtown, we can only go either to the Robert Thompson Transit Center or to the West Side Multimodal Center. And I'll show you options from, for those this evening. And if we were to go east-west and connect the West Side Multimodal Center and the Robert Thompson Transit Center, that means we can only go into the urban core, and I'll show you an option available with that this evening. So those are some of the basic overarching outcomes as we move forward. Option one is the option that was presented last week at the committee meetings. It is the full north-south corridor. It goes from Cunningham on the north end at Broadway, down through the center of the business core of downtown on St. Mary's Navarro, and goes down to the NPO area, Rosario's area, and South Town. That is the option that was shown at the committee meetings. The only thing that we've changed since the committee meetings is we added one vehicle as a spare to this particular budget. So the budget went from 163 to 167 as part of, part of that program. You'll see on each one of these, we've estimated the ridership. So we estimate about 500,000 riders on this. This, that is about one-third of the general overall ridership of the LPA. With the LPA ridership was about 1.4 million riders. And then we've broken down the costs so you can see what the costs are. So the track civil and systems, that's the basic infrastructure needed for the streetcars, about $86 million. The vehicles, and each, each option has different vehicles based on its operating characteristics, and this one happens to be around 33.4 million. And then we've done a maintenance facility. We got one price in if it's less than 10 vehicles, and another price in if it's greater than 10 vehicles as we move forward. And this one happens to be 47.2 million. The maintenance facility cost, that is a one-time cost, or a majority of that is a one-time cost. You build the facility, and the first project off obviously takes the brunt of that cost associated with that. The dash green line on all the alternatives are future phases. It, it could be one phase. It could be multiple phases. Staff is not intending anything with the green lines about how we move forward on, on any of these projects. So that is option one, as presented. Option two, characteristics of that are, we pulled back the north in the south route. We pulled back the north to Pearl Parkway. So it still serves the Pearl area, but does not go as far as Cunningham. And on the south end, we've pulled back the south end to Caesar Chavez. It would end at Caesar Chavez. And what that allowed us to do was look at an alternative of going over to the west side and connecting to the West Side Multimodal Center. You might remember the ridership profile here in San Antonio has a lot to do with a north-to-west movement. We have a lot of movement in those directions. So we feel that it's very important, and you can see here, based on the ridership projections, adding that West Side Multimodal Center connection along with the way this, this particular route operates, and the way this would operate would be one line that would come like this, and another line that would come like this. So what that does is that puts five-minute service in this very heavy travel corridor and, and bumps up our ridership based on the five-minute frequency of service based on the two different routes. So with that, we get about 1.1 million riders. I will say on, on the bus side, there's at least two times more routes that go into the West Side Multimodal Center than go into the Robert Thompson Transit Center as we move things forward. And that's purely about the amount of movement of people in and around that north-to-west or west-to-north, north movement. It's about $183.6 million, so it falls under the 185 cap we gave ourselves. And you can see the breakdown there. I will come back to option three. These are, these are in a particular order, the order in which we develop them. But I'll show you why option three is in a different category. So option four is basically the same concept on the north-south route, but instead of connecting to the West Side Multimodal Center, we went over to the Robert Thompson Transit Center. So you can see there, that's one route. So that, this would operate as basically just one route that goes all the way through. So it's 10-minute service. The vehicles are based on the 10 to 12-minute service. It's got $100 million in civil, $38.2 million in vehicles, and the maintenance facility costs associated with that. And you can see the ridership is, is somewhat comparable to just the north-south route at 497,000 annual riders. Option seven was, when I talked about some of the basic outcomes of the analysis, was if we connected the west side and the east side, we could only go into the core of downtown. So you can see here, we have an option that connects from West Side Multimodal Center along Caesar Chavez over to the Robert Thompson Transit Center, and then goes up into the core, up to Martin Pecan, but does not go into the Broadway Corridor. And that annual ridership is about 625,000 riders. It does have two, two routes. One that operates somewhat like this, and one that operates either like this or like this, with that would be dependent upon how we move forward. But it has a, an estimated cost of about $175 million, so it falls under the 185 conversation we had. So those are the options that fall within some of the characteristics that we felt were good viable candidates for looking at different phasing options as we move forward. I want to show you some other ones that we considered, just to show you that we did consider them and provoke any thought you might have. Option 2B, this is basically the full north-south route, so don't pull it back on the north and don't pull it back on the south, but go over to the West Side Multimodal Center. So it's just a subset of, of option two. You can see there that mainly the cost kicks up to about $219 million associated with that. So it fell outside of our, our 185 parameter that we looked at. Option three was an option that used Caesar Chavez on the south side to go over to the West Side Multimodal Center, and, and we wanted to look at that and see what that connection looked like. So instead of going across to Martin Pecan, what if we went down and around on the south end? It kicks the cost up to around $193 million. So once again, outside of our 185. And the ridership is only around 672 annual riders associated with that. So we, we did feel that the cost and the ridership, it was not something that staff would recommend. Option five is kind of one of the LPA options that we looked at. It is two routes. So once again, we would probably have a route that operates something like that, and a route that operates probably something like that. Once again, good service in the core. However, it takes 12 vehicles to do that. It's about four and a half route miles. Around 1.1 and a half million riders, so comparable to option two with ridership potential. And it's got a, a cost of 232 million, so it fell outside the 185. And then option six is basically a pure east-west route along Caesar Chavez. It fell within the 185. It is a 137.1 as far as the capital expenditure, but the annual ridership is only a little over a quarter million annual riders. So we didn't feel that that was a good viable candidate for our first starter system here in San Antonio. So with those options that we looked at, staff would recommend option two, moving forward with the development of option two and phasing. I just want to reiterate once again that staff is continuing to clear the whole entire 5.9 miles of the LPA. So if additional funding does become available as we move through this process, we are hopefully in a position to grab that, because we are quote-unquote shovel-ready, and we have cleared a project or a program or a system associated with the streetcar. So this is the recommendation, 10 vehicles, around a 1.1 million annual riders. It meets the 185 threshold. It could, does connect the north, the south, and to the West Side Multimodal Center. It's got good ridership and, and gives us the five-minute headways in downtown that really boost up the ridership on the streetcar corridor. And it does allow us multiple options for the vehicle storage and maintenance facility as we move forward in the NEPA process and selecting that particular site. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding what was presented here this evening and the recommendation. And then Jeff is prepared to have a little discussion about the federal landscape.
Brian, I have a series of questions for you. So when we began this conversation years ago about the implementation of modern streetcar, we talked about being able to afford to build a project that was funded locally. So in our conversations with the FTA even up till last week, what distinguishes us from other potential streetcar projects and moves us ahead is the fact that we're clearing the whole system through NEPA, through our engineering clearances, and that we are proposing to build a leg that we can afford to build. Is it based on all of our, your work and the work of our general engineering consultant? Option number two is affordable?
That is correct, Chairman.
And it has an appropriate amount of contingency associated with it to protect the project?
It does. The civil construction has about a 25% contingency associated with it.
This project has the highest ridership of any of the routes that you've studied?
It does, based on the thresh, the 185 threshold we put on ourselves.
To, to carry about a million passengers a year, how many buses would you mean?
Oh. Be 1/25th of our current.
80 buses to carry the same amount of ridership?
Would be using 10 vehicles.
In this recommended project, this, maybe this is a question for you, Keith. Does this have the appropriate connectivity to Primo and to the, to the routes that we, that carry the majority of our ridership, so it is the best multimodal system that can be proposed?
Given these options, yes.
Out of all of the options, this is the one that has the best connectivity?
Yes.
So my final question, probably, it's not even a really a question. I, I want to take one minute and talk about context, because when I joined this board as chairman, we had a Bus Rapid Transit project that was stopped. And in five years, this agency, when you ask the question about whether this agency is ready at this moment to enter into a project of this kind, a major capital improvement project, we've been voted the top MTA in the state of Texas more than once. We've been voted one of the safest MTA authorities in the country. We've been recognized for the implementation of our Bus Rapid Transit project. We've been recognized for the improvements that we've made with regard to our intelligent vehicles and the way that we relate to our users. And we're proposing a route today that highest, the highest level of ridership, that is within the amount of money that Via has said we will spend, and that if taken in context with the next action, which is to enter in a project development with the FTA, has the highest and best potential to be leveraged with federal dollars. And so I would speak in favor of the work of not just this board through many public meetings, but also our consultants and our staff in moving this project forward, both for local funding and a next phase for federal funding. Do I have a motion to put this project on the table?
I would so moved for option number two.
I have a motion by Dr. Gambetta. I have a second by Mr. Lee. Further discussion? Questions? Mr. Gamb, Dr. Gambetta?
I would like to thank the staff for responding to the committee directive to draw out alternatives to the one recommended to us initially. And with plenty of time, and for, for having done that, with plenty of time, for allowing the board to review the alternatives. And we have, I think, improved measure for adoption as a result. There, I mean, it's very clear that the, as with always the case, the initial staff recommendation is not a done deal, as it may have been suggested. The authority to adopt lies with the board. And then several reasons, and Henry, excuse me, our chair, summarized them well, as did you, Brian. And I, I would like to just state a, a couple of things, just emphasize them. One, this is the first leg, a phase of a starter system. It does not stand alone. It is, secondly, I suppose, a, a leg that goes north and south and east and west. And there is a commitment by the environmental and other aspects and by meetings with the federal government, a commitment to, to a complete, full circulatory system in the downtown area, as a system that will increase mobility and ridership, and will move towards better interconnectivity through that. And interconnectivity means, means increased service and mobility for not simply the downtown, but for the city, county, and region, and that will facilitate, I think, in this particular route, both areas in economic development that have already taken off, and those that are in the initial phases of, or even before initial phases, some that will need stimulation. And I think that the, it does, that this route would do that. We use existing revenues only. That's unique nationally, as, as our chair had said, and a unique, places us in a unique opportunity and competitive advantage with others to secure money, to complete the entire system. Also, I think it's important to mention that it's a system that is more green than other modes of transportation. One could say cheaper, cleaner, and faster, I suppose, than others, because it also will, the system will decongest bus congestion, over 60% in downtown clogged areas, with side effects, with positive time and lung benefits, I suppose, on, on that aspect. And, and we use, there's no increase in or use of property taxes, no use of ATD funds. We're using the existing revenues. It interconnects with the West Side Multimodal, increasing mobility, not just for downtown, but throughout the entire city, county, and region. And it furthers the, the goals of the modern streetcar system exceptionally well as a first leg by, again, enhancing mobility, interconnectivity, ridership, economic development, quality urbanization, and livability, while preserving aesthetic and cultural assets of a great city. As, as, as Chair of PPD, I want to thank the staff very much for exploring these alternative routes and coming, and, and the consultants for the quality work that has taken place.
Any further questions? Mr. Ponnet?
Jim, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to clarify for not only the board, but for the community, that the $185 million number leaves a certain amount of money still left in the, in the pot to cover for any contingencies that we may encounter, you know, cost overruns and that kind of thing. And you're confident that that number is a sensible number?
Yeah, based on, we've, we've put in a 25% contingency on the civil aspect of the work. So the work would have to go up by 25% in order to exceed that amount, and that, that seems to be a fair, reasonable risk level at this moment in time.
And putting forward this kind of proposal doesn't limit or cut us out of any kind of ability to apply for federal funds in any way, does it?
It, it does not, and the next agenda item relates to that.
Okay. One of the questions that I've been presented, Mr. Chair, and I'm sure all of us have gotten in one form or another, is the idea of this, this... it in one form or another, is the idea of this deals with the construction costs, but you know, what about operational costs? How are we dealing with those? I don't think that that's getting communicated enough. Perhaps Jeff, if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, in our pro forma for looking at our finances moving forward, we had put in that pro forma dollars to support the streetcar operating costs without incorporating any other reduction in service that that might actually permit. So we've publicly stated and in our pro forma included dollars that would allow us to maintain the current or greater level of bus service plus this project. The dollars that we have in our pro forma actually exceed the dollars that would be needed to support the operation of the full locally-preferred alternative. And that pro forma was evaluated by Standard and Poor's, and we received a triple A rating, as you know, for our bonding. So we have actually programmed more dollars for operation of the system than what we projected will take.
You want, I'm sorry. I think that what I like about this, thank you for that, Mr. Aaron. What I like about this proposal, and what didn't come across strongly enough frankly at the committee meeting, so I'm glad that we were able to kick the tires, I'm sorry to use metaphors, it seemed to be really overdone with this topic. But what I liked about this proposal that didn't come across clearly enough in the committee meeting was the fact that we're really creating with this a system. And it's obviously not the entire system that we originally approved, but it's a pretty close approximation of it. And worst-case scenario, should we not qualify for federal funding, this system would be self-sustaining, it would be a pretty good reflection of perhaps what we were trying to do with the LPA. And I think that what we as a community are always striving to do is be at once aspirational and sensible. The LPA is aspirational. This plan is sensible, and they're not mutually conflicting. And I like the fact that we're almost, as I said, reflecting what we were trying to capture with the LPA and what we're going to continue to strive to capture with implementing the full LPA with time. But I think this will show our community that this is a really good decision for our community, for all the stakeholders, and most importantly, for our ridership. So I'm very happy to see this recommendation.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Booth, before we vote, in my expectation that this route will connect to Hemisferal Park and head easternly, I'd like as our consultant for you to give me your perspective on what the federal climate will be like and future needs for federal funds so that we can continue to expand upon our streetcar system.
The budget deal that was reached, that apparently the Senate voted on today, would provide increased funding for FY14 and FY15 in the budget. And it levels out the impacts of sequestration. So in fact, we expect more much to go into the non-defense function of the federal government and with the priority being given to transportation by the appropriations committee. So if you'd asked me a month ago, the situation around the new starts program, the FTA administrator was pretty dire about sort of the impact on existing projects. But I think he's feeling a lot more optimistic today, given the budget deal. In fact, he said the budget deal at the end of the day came closer to the Senate than it did to the House for the funding of the new starts program. So that I think it will make, what it does now is ensure that all those projects, once the appropriations process is done, we expect that all the projects that have FFGA's or project construction grant agreements will be fully funded. And that there may be then future capacity at new projects going forward, given the FY15 numbers that are part of the budget deal. So we're feeling a whole lot better about the program right now than we were probably a week or two ago before the budget deal was agreed to. So I think there's been some good news coming out of Congress, and this is a two-year deal. So it means that the FY15 process should go more smoothly. And the only negative issue is we still have to deal with the overall condition of the surface transportation program, and that affects both highways and transit, and we need to come up with a supplement to the gas tax to help sustain current spending level. So that's, I mean, I believe it'll get fixed. It's just going to be a little bit interesting until it does.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Pitch?
Just, Brian, if you can help me understand some of the ridership numbers, because a lot of this decision, I take it, is driven by ridership. So I was just trying to look at option one and option two, right? And the option one... So option one is not much different than the north-south and option two, right? You lose a little bit of both the north extension and the south extension. So I take it you're losing a few riders on the north side. Yet, option two, the ridership goes up by 600,000. So I don't know if it's a fair assumption by adding that leg to the west, you're picking up somewhere north of 600,000 riders. Can you explain why that is? I mean, how can you, just with that little extension, pick up 600,000? You're basically saying you're picking up more than 50% additional riders. You're doubling your ridership just by adding that extension.
Let me answer with two statements. It's not just about the length of the extension, it has to do with the way it's being operated also. So first, Route One is a single line that operates up and down. So it's got 10-minute service through the core. And there's a lot of ridership potential in the core of the Riverbend area, around the Riverwalk and that general area. When you go to option two, that central core, this area right here, is now actually served by two routes. So it has five-minute service in that general area. So you have a train or a streetcar every five minutes in that area. So frequency is a great driver of ridership in the different models that we utilize. So the frequency of the service greatly creates extra ridership. And then the other thing is the underlying bus network associated with all these options is, we might remember the C Plan, which was the option to try to eliminate about 60% of the bus traffic in and around the downtown core. And as part of that different routing options, the buses actually come into this general area right in here and then turn and either go to Westside or go to Robert Thompson. So there is also a lot of interconnectivity to the existing bus network that occurs in that general area that drives ridership also, because there's potential to connect to other routes and go to different locations. So not only are you connecting all the different routes over here with a potential transfer and transit center option, you also have potential transfers that occur along this general area. So that is what drives the ridership up in those locations. Mr. Pitch?
And that additional length only increases the cost by, I guess you're picking up a little bit by shortening the north-south, but still that delta is only, what was it, 17,000 or 17 million, I mean?
Between one and, yeah, the actual difference is between 167 and 183.
16, 17 million dollars.
And the savings occurs with the reduction in the north and the south, and the increase occurs with going from seven vehicles to 10 vehicles. Seven vehicles to 10 vehicles.
Mr. Allison?
Ron, if you've got one question and just a comment, I noticed in the different options there's some slight variation in the cost of the maintenance facility. Is that strictly related to the number of vehicles?
It is, Mr. Allison. We used one cost for 10 or less vehicles and one cost for 10 or more vehicles.
Yeah, that, I want to echo the appreciation for you coming back since the committee meeting with these additional options. I think this is far superior to the initial recommendation for a number of reasons. Most importantly, I agree with the sentiment expressed earlier. I think we need to maintain some commitment to the overall system we adopted. And frankly, I had some concerns whether the north-south route that was initially proposed really did that, other than our saying we're going to go forward with the rescue system. I think this, option two, graphically shows that commitment to extending the system by going to the west initially and showing the future connectivity to the east and further north and south. And I'm particularly impressed by the terminus points, and I know we spent a lot of time in the committee, you explained in the terminus points. And I think option two has some excellent terminus points that allow for that future connectivity and future expansion over the west or the east and also south. Particularly sold by the one to the south at Cesar Chavez. I think that's a very telling connection right there where there's a crossroad and a good terminus point. And then I think the ridership numbers tell a strong, strong story about how important this option is. Again, just appreciate your work on this.
Mr. Lee?
I also want to echo, and thank you for all the hard work, your presentation for the operations committee, and obviously the great work of planning and project development. I think it's been outstanding. I do have a question for you, Jeff, because during committee meetings, we were talking a lot about, kind of on what Mr. Miller thought up about federal dollars. And we were, I guess, just merely speculating. And I heard you talk about new starts. Now during committee, we were also talking about small starts.
Okay. So I'm using new starts euphemistically to cover what's now entitled the Capital Investment Grants Program, which is core capacity, new starts, and small starts.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that because we had talked about the ability to go after one or another. And we'd also discussed the ability, if you go after, I guess, whatever the term is, small starts, you can continue to go, you don't have to just stop at the single.
We'll talk about that in a second.
And as for the route, Mr. Kim, I was impressed the fact that on the north, you have a natural curl all the way down to the south to, right at the south town, probably the multimodal center. And then coming through and taking in the heart of downtown, I think this first phase of the streetcars can be timed.
Mrs. Persnance?
Just had a quick question. So did your Westside Multimodal take in UTSA downtown campus numbers?
It did take in some of that, but obviously, the closer you get to UTSA, the more it would take that into account. But right now, it stops just short of turning there on Commerce or Buena Vista to go down.
And then the hospitals?
The hospital numbers are in there to an extent. I will also say the same thing I said. The ridership is calculated the same way for each different option, and it was calculated the same way as the other ridership numbers. And I would say that they continue to be conservative numbers associated with ridership, but they are consistent across all the different alternatives looked at.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Jason Rodriguez and the team. They're the ones that did the yeoman's work associated with these options over the last four or five days. So I just wanted to publicly recognize that team as we move forward. So thank you.
Stand up.
Still here.
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion on the table to approve option number two as the Phase One locally-funded route for modern streetcar. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration of the Federal Transit Administration project development approval, Mr. Kim, which should be taken hand-in-hand with this.
These two items do go hand-in-hand, and we're going to have Mr. Booth give a quick presentation, kind of based on the federal landscape. And then kind of I will describe what we are asking this evening as far as a resolution for Mr. R. to submit a letter to the FTA to enter into project development.
Just briefly, where are we? FTA has issued guidance for implementation of Safety Lou and begun to implement some of the provisions for MAP 21. We expect additional guidance to come out somewhere shortly after the first of the year, to be followed with the proposed rulemaking. That'll take about 18 to 24 months to complete. And so we expect that to give us guidance on the criteria and some of the changes made in MAP 21, as well as to implement things like program of interrelated projects, which I'll talk about in a minute. So what do we look at over the next six months or so, or to the completion of the NEPA process? One, taking that entire system through the NEPA process to pre-clear everything, so that, that's an important step, and I'll talk about why that's important. We also see the opportunity to develop more information under the criteria, as we better understand the criteria, to make some choices around whether to use the simplified FTA stops model or continue to use the regional travel demand model to look at current year or do current year and forecast year. Why do you do a forecast year? You do a forecast year to look at future land use and economic development impacts. And so if your benefits are more over the next 20 years, you'll want to use a horizon year in addition to the current year forecast to sort of capture those benefits. And so decisions made by the city around land use and economic development, the corridor and economic development strategies will be very important to the ridership and the mobility benefits for the project. So that's an important conversation to have with the city about actions that can be taken that are within their control to sort of ensure that kind of development and the land use density is necessary to support the project, that then get realized in the regional travel demand model and in the stops model. So there's a relationship between those decisions that will help result in increases in ridership and to help you improve the project and its competitiveness. So those are things that'll be worked on over the next six months. In addition, you know, we talked about, you know, sort of looking at, you know, the whole, as you go through the process and you look at things like mobility benefits and cost effectiveness, it's a function of capital cost, operating costs over 20 years, and you play with those numbers to try to present the most competitive project. So as we look at that and we look at the project going forward, that'll be part of what the project team will be doing, is looking at the interaction of those numbers, look at the ridership numbers to try to come up with the most competitive project possible. And so that's part of the activity that'll take place. In addition, the changes in new starts and the cost effectiveness criteria focus on riders and boardings or linked trips. So the fact that you're now connecting to the western multimodal facility, the fact that you're now, now that you're connecting to more bus routes, those trips get to count. Whereas before, we focused on travel time savings, now we care about boardings and riders, and we care about linked trips. So the more connections to the existing bus system result in greater ridership for the project that improves its competitiveness under new starts. So there are many elements of which you can be working on as you work through the criteria to help improve the project competitiveness. And then ultimately, at the end of this is for formal adoption of the locally-preferred alternative and inclusion in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That happens at the end of the NEPA process as an indication. Now, what makes, so what are the benefits of that? The benefits of that are it allows you to continue to develop the information for small starts, for it to be evaluated and rated by FTA. We have better clarity in terms of project cost and project schedule, which will be very important to FTA in terms of where it fits in the new small starts program and the schedule within the program. It also positions you to be part of a program of interrelated projects, which we'll talk about in a minute. But it also allows you to possibly get a Tiger grant. And as we've seen in different cities like in Fort Lauderdale, we've seen in Cincinnati and other cities, FTA is willing to come in with additional financing around the project through the Tiger grant program for streetcar projects. So depending on sort of if we decide to fund the first phase locally, but we need, we want to make you do an extension or add a portion of the project that is currently cut out of the project, Tiger can be brought into that to sort of supplement that. And so we should be thinking about that and clearing it through the NEPA process and getting better information about project cost and schedule will be very important if a decision's made to seek a Tiger grant. And we do expect Tiger to be funded once again in FY14. Once the committees complete their action in the middle of January, we do expect another round of Tiger. So all that we're doing is positioning the project to take advantage of that, if that's a decision made by VIA and by the region to seek Tiger funding for a streetcar project or a portion of the streetcar project. And then if the decision's to use any sort of NFA finance, do a loan guarantee or credit enhancement, if you decide to borrow or to do availability payments or other kind of financing approaches under P3, taking it through the NEPA process is an essential part of competing for the TFI program. So those, all we're doing is preserving all those options to sort of develop the strategy around the financing of the project as we go forward. As the project team continues to work on the information it'll be working on anyway, we're just preserving those options by completing NEPA and taking it through that process. So where do you stand right now? The chairman talked about project development. You know, the decision on the table today is to formally enter project development. The reality is that you're already doing work that would typically be done during project development as part of the NEPA process. So you're already doing that work today. And so this just formally puts you into that process. Now unlike new starts...
I want to stop you right there.
Yes.
Okay. This goes to the question of VIA's preparedness to undertake this process. Many people apply for inclusion in project development without even knowing whether they can complete NEPA. Is that true? Is that true?
Yes, and I think that's got FTA concerned.
We are already in NEPA.
Well, you are. And I think that stands you apart from a lot of the folks who, and this is FTA's concern.
And many people apply for project development without any idea where their local match will come from.
That's correct.
So in the opinion of the FTA, we would likely be farther ahead than most of the cities who are applying for inclusion in project development because of the work that's been done in terms of engineering, because of the fact that we are already in the process of clearing NEPA, and because we are bringing $210 million to the table.
And I would also, in addition to that, you are very close to adopting an LPA. By virtue of the decision of the LPA today, that is an important and fundamental part of project development. So the fact that you're already bringing that in and you're completing NEPA around a known project stands you apart from a lot of other systems who are still, as yet, unresolved as to what their project will be, the project or why we're going with the project.
So in all of these charts, I want to be super clear.
Yes.
San Antonio and VIA is more prepared to enter into project development than most of the cities who have already been included in project development or apply for project development.
I would concur and agree with you.
Has more local funding than most of the cities, or any local funding, than other cities who apply for project development.
That is correct.
And it will help the FTA, as they articulate their case to the federal government, that they need more funding to have candidates like VIA and San Antonio included in project development.
That is correct.
Thank you. And what we are proposing to do today is to clear that local leg and to all of those green dotted lines that you saw to ask for consideration, so that the actions of approving the locally funded leg and the federally funded leg go, move parallel through this next phase of clearance, including NEPA.
Absolutely. And I think what we want to do is to maximize and leverage the local investment in the system. And I use those words advisedly because historically, FTA has looked at corridors. But streetcars are often systems that are not just corridors. And I think program of interrelated projects allows us to take advantage of that. As it's defined right now, it, small starts are not eligible and part of the co-
So we will be one of the leaders in the conversation about a system that is cleared through the program of interrelated projects. Let's not get too complicated.
No, I totally, the benefit to you is then you can move more than one corridor, you can build out your whole system through a program of interrelated projects.
So a system that goes forward with $210 million in local funding-
Yes.
And has completed NEPA is going to be right in front of that new program.
Absolutely. And, you know, FTA has also allowed more than one corridor to go forward in a region. So Houston has two light rail projects that are advancing concurrently. So there are other examples of communities that have moved two projects, not just one at a time. And you have the ability to do that with the fact that you have all your local match. So the goal is to preserve all those options, have a conversation with FTA about the best way to take, to go forward, and sort of work with them to see what is most advantageous to San Antonio in moving forward the system. So that's what we're trying to do here and keep, in talking about program of interrelated projects, but keeping all those options open to be able to move as much of the system as we can move forward through the federal process. As you're making the decision about, sort of, project competitiveness is also how to leverage the local money. So yeah, we're trying to keep all that, all those options on the table. And I think San, I mean, I don't know if Jeff told you, but the administrator mentioned San Antonio at the hearing last week in questioning from Congressman Williams. He specifically mentioned San Antonio as a city in the state of Texas that he's keeping an eye on in terms of what's happening in the city. So you are on the FTA radar screen as a region and as a city as you're moving forward the project. So just sort of the closer here is we're looking at project schedule and we're looking to get in the president's budget. The key issue is sort of to be in the president's budget, they're going to look at our project schedule, they're going to look at our project finance, which we are, will do quite well given what we have in the financial plan and the O and M cost of the project. So we're looking at, sort of, end of September is the target date to be ready for FTA to rate and evaluate the project, to be included in the president's budget. And so that's an important timeframe, and FTA will want to look to see the project schedule, to see that we will be able to complete that project at the start of a fiscal year that begins October 1st, or roughly a year after you submit the information, and that they want to be able to see that they can break ground on that project or execute the project construction grant agreement during that fiscal year. So that'll, those will be, so project schedule becomes key going forward to demonstrate to FTA that we're ready, that we are ready to move forward with the project. And so I think that's, that would be part of the conversations, we're working with the project team to sort of drive that schedule issue.
And that would be applicable for both, for the entire system, for both legs, for the red line and for the dotted green line.
Absolutely.
So that both lines could move forward simultaneous.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any other questions? All in favor? Oh, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to apply? Do I have a letter here to the Federal Transit Administrator that I assume you all are going to hand carry up there before we have that visit in January? Do I have a motion?
Move to it.
I have a motion by Dr. Gambetta in a second, by Gerald Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Motion passes. Item number eight, Deani, Dr. Mendoza.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm going to turn the podium over to Orlando Gallego, the manager of Employee Services and Benefits, and also representatives from Rudd and Waston, to bring you up to speed on our actuarial audit.
Thank you, Deani.
Good evening, board members. This item is the Actuarial Audit of the Defined Benefit Retirement Plan. The Texas Legislature requires an audit of the actuarial report and related studies of large public sector retirement systems at least every five years by an independent actuary. VIA retained Rudd and Wisdom, and they evaluated Gabriel Roder and Smith's companies' 2012 actuarial evaluation and 2011 actuarial, five-year actuarial experience study. This is the Defined Benefit Plan's second actuarial audit, and we have Mark Finlaw from Rudd and Wisdom here tonight to give the summary of their report.
Thank you, board members. We will look together at a few pages in the report that I believe you have an electronic version of. An actuarial audit is better described as an actuarial review. It's one actuarial firm looking at the work of another actuarial firm. So Rudd and Wisdom was hired to be the independent actuary to look at the work of Gabriel Roder Smith, referred to as GRS in the report. And this was conducted to comply with the state law requirements. The two best results that I've seen from actuarial reviews, having been on both sides, is number one, the board gets some reassurance that their actuaries are providing good services, and number two, the board's actuaries get a few suggestions for improving their services. And that describes the situation for you and for GRS. So the executive summary on pages one through four contain, contain the scope of the actuarial review, a summary of our key findings, and a summary of our key recommendations. Now, we reviewed the methods, assumptions, calculations, and communications of the key work products of Gabriel Roder Smith. And we looked, we looked not only at the overall results, but we dug into the details behind the results. If you look on the bottom of page one and the top of page two of the executive summary, that's, that's our key findings. And what it says is that the October 1, 2012 actuarial evaluation by GRS that you received at your meeting in May, I believe this year, provided a reasonable assessment of the actuarial condition of your plan, including the recommended contribution for the current plan year. One of our challenges in the actuarial profession is communicating technical results in a meaningful way. The key recommendation, and there are nine that are shown on pages three and four, are all about improving communications. There was, there was no suggestion that there was anything substantially wrong with the work by Gabriel Roder Smith. So all these recommendations are just suggestions for improving communications. And I just want to mention only three. If you look at the cover letter, the second page of the cover letter highlights those three key recommendations. In the nine, they were the first, second, and fifth, but we just want to emphasize those three. And the first one is to clarify the one-year lag in their valuation report between the valuation date and the beginning of the year in which the recommended contribution will start. We noticed that the auditor missed that point in your September 30, 2012 CAFR notes. So we suggested some language on page 16. The second point was to add an analysis of the changes in the recommended contribution rate, and those were described on page 17. And we believe that this would make the report more meaningful for the board and for most readers. After all, the bottom line for the board is, how much do we need to contribute to this Defined Benefit Plan to keep it on a sound financial basis? So this would just merely give you a reconciliation of what changed between two actuarial evaluations. And it's something that Gabriel Roder Smith already does for the city of San Antonio for their plan in the Texas municipal retirement system. So they know how to do that, and it would be, I think, a useful addition to their report. And the third one is to, in their next five-year experience study, to include objective support for the recommended mortality assumptions that clearly demonstrates compliance with Actuarial Standard of Practice Number 35. Actuarial Standards of Practice don't prescribe assumptions, they just give guidelines and principles for reviewing experience and selecting actuarial assumptions. And their assumption is reasonable, they just didn't provide enough objective demonstration to support their recommendation. And that concludes, that concludes my summary report. I'd be glad to take any questions you might have.
So we're just asking for acceptance of this actuarial audit report. We need to send it to the state of Texas, that it's been formally presented and accepted by our board.
I don't think I have a motion for this audit. Is, I don't think I have a motion. It's not agendized for action. Is this item number nine or item number, we're at number, item number eight.
It's eight.
But does this include item number nine? No. I don't, it's not, how do you agendize it for action? Has, this has gone through committee?
It has not.
I believe we can, we may be able to accept it, but without approving it. It's an acceptance.
Motion for acceptance? Tell me what I'm doing. I have a motion for approval by Mr. Miller and a second by?
Second by?
By Stephen Allison. Okay. All in favor? Any further discussion? Okay. Motion passes. Item number nine.
In addition, staff is bringing to you tonight the first plan amendment for the Defined Contribution Plan. And again, I'm going to have Orlando present that. We do have-
Mary, yeah. We have Mary Potter from Cox Smith. And this item is for approval of the Defined Contribution Plan's First Amendment. Mary Potter has noted some minor technical discrepancies in the plan document. This is minor housekeeping. There's no major provisions being changed here. And staff has provided the red line resolution, and we are available for questions. No, sir.
Do I have a motion for approval? I have a motion by Mr. Miller and a second by Mr. Allison. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor? Motion passes. Item number 10.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this evening, I'm coming back to you with an update on the Child Development Center. If you recall, during the budget process, the budget was adopted, but there was concerns by members of the board about the future of the Child Development Center. We have done some work to present to you some information on this and where we are and a staff recommendation. Again, during the budget process, there was a proposal to close the VIA Child Development Center. The rationale for closing the center was that the CDC, as we term it, was not used extensively, and it was not an effective recruiting tool, which was what it was created to do for the employees of VIA. The future site development that's occurring here at headquarters is not compatible with the center. But the board did ask that staff explore possible alternatives and returned with an update this month. We did explore, excuse me, we did explore options. We did a lot of outreach to surrounding childcare facilities. There's approximately 11 in the area. We explored leased space, and then we looked at a possible transition policy implementation should a full closure occur. We found one facility, a private facility, that can provide comparable services and perhaps hire our existing staff. We did look at leased space, but that space was too expensive. We received a quote of $18,000 a month. We then turned our attention to transition options that would include both internal options for our employees and external employment options, and then talked about how we might manage that transition by assisting the employees should the board act this evening to close the center and provide a childcare subsidy between the months of June and December of this year. We have found a private option called Madison Square Children's Center. The center is comparable to what we now provide for our employees here on, at headquarters. The center provides a breakfast, lunch, snack, and there is a cook on staff. The hours of operation are comparable, and I've taken the opportunity to meet with their administrators and their board members. They are willing to look at those hours of operation so that they're more conducive to our hours of operation. There's a 5% discount that would be provided, similar, they work very closely with HEB. The location is just down the street on, down Lexington, approximately five minutes from our central offices. The care rates are higher than VIA. And there is also an annual registration and supply fee.
Yeah.
Right here. The cost differential is by age of child on a weekly basis. Infants, six weeks to 17 months. The center charges $180.50. VIA, right now, has a current rate of $120. For the ages of 18 to 2, 18 months to two years, they charge $166.25, and the VIA CDC charges $120. So there's a differential there. And then preschool, three years to five years, they charge $156.75, and VIA, the CDC, charges $115. So there's a differential. Go ahead.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Did the union weigh in on this?
Yes, sir, I did speak to Mr. Rodriguez and members of the team, indicating to them we were looking at this particular thing. We've kept them apprised of our actions over the last several months so that they would understand where we were and where we were moving to. What's important about the center, although it's a private option, and is that it is a Texas Star childcare center. It does have linkages to a specific curriculum for the children. So from a comparable basis on an educational perspective, it does what we wanted to do. On the internal side, for the employees, if, if they want to stay with VIA, we've made every effort, and we will, with President Art's approval, make room for them within VIA. Many of these employees are long-term employees of VIA and have benefits in retirement with us, and they may opt to want to stay. What we explored was if they did not want to stay and they wanted to continue in childcare, the center has said that if many children transfer there, they're willing to hire them as childcaregivers, and their licensure requirements are similar to ours. So we were trying to find- So we were trying to find a kind of apples-to-apples comparison, ours of operation, services, the curriculum, which is very important to us, and that the employees also have access, quick access to it.
How much of a saving to VIA does this equate to?
We did a cost analysis. The operation in total is approximately $500,000. But we do collect the fees that you saw from the employees. So the differential is approximately $167,000.
Will any of that money be returned to the employees that have dependent children as part of a benefit?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've allotted, if you look at, at the bottom, I have not met with employees or any of the families until the board took action, but we have, with discussions with President Arn again, are willing to provide an employee childcare subsidy during the transition, which is one-half of the difference, or $30 per week as a cap, to help them.
That's up until December the-
That would be for seven months, for the remainder of the year.
So after that, do we return any of that money to the employees with dependent children? After December the 14th?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Mendoza?
Yes.
How many, and you said it and I probably missed, how many students, how many children are at the center right now?
There are 40 children, 20 or two, it's a half and half, 20 are actual children of employees, the others may be grandchildren or nieces.
Okay, because when you talked about if enough transferred, they would look for teachers, so most likely you're not going to see a large amount of transfers.
There would be some room for those people who would want to stay in childcare, but obviously not everybody. But the offer that VIA is making is that if you want to stay, then we would try to find a position, we would find a position for you so that your benefits and, and other employment with VIA would be protected.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And, Mr. Chairman, and the facility, the new facility that you're recommending is, would you say it was a better place for the children than the current facility in terms of the physical environment?
Well, it is, it is an older building. I've toured it and I've met with the board president. Both of the, they have a board of trustees, they are all educators, and they have that kind of advice and counsel at the top. Their administrator was very well. I went through the center, having a PhD in curriculum and instruction, I was looking for how the children were reacting. And so the children appeared happy, the children were very vocal, there was a lot of interaction with the teachers, the room was very neat, the facility itself was clean, tidy, and looked very comparable to the kind of operation we run here.
And is there a linkage to pre-K lessons for?
Yes, actually, they are working, they're connecting with Mayor Castro's program.
Yeah, that's an important ingredient, I think, thank you. Just wanted to include that in the record.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you. Item number 11 has been deferred, and we've already dealt with items number 12 and 13. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
We haven't voted on the number 12, sir.
We do have to vote, okay. Item number 12.
And you have action on your item?
No. Oh, it's not an action. Thank you, sir.
It says update. Do you need an, do you need-
No, we didn't. But on 12, we do.
Item number 12, do I have a motion, Mr. Ponik?
Yes, I approve that we approve things as discussed in closed meeting and as reflected against the resolution as provided. Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Do I have a motion for adjournment? I have a motion and a second we stand adjourned. The time is now 7:23, and we will call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Advanced Transportation District. Item number three, consent agenda, do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Lee and a second by Mrs. Brusenyo. All in favor? Motion passes. Item number four is not pertinent. Item number five, motion for adjournment, do I have one? I have one by Mr. Miller and a second by Mr. Lee. We stand adjourned.